Welcome to our December 3, 2013 Gilbert Town Council Study Session. It's good to see the group. I can tell it was a great Thanksgiving, smiles on everyone's faces, and we're grateful for much, including the chance to meet like this. We have four agenda items before we will move into an executive session. The first agenda item, for the council to know, is going to be postponed. And there's some additional work that's taking place on the Park's master plan. And in discussion earlier this afternoon, it was felt that just a little more time would be helpful. And so, Agenda Item Number One will take place, but not today. Agenda Item Number Two is a discussion and direction regarding the community development block grants. As we talked a month ago, a month and a half ago, and I know the council had requested a transition plan, this is the day where we're getting some feedback on research that has taken place. And so, we will turn to town leadership to help direct traffic and discussion on Agenda Item Number Two. Good evening, Mayor Lewis. Rod Buchanan, Parks and Recreation Director, tonight. Town Council and Mayor would like to talk a little bit about the CDBG Development Block Grant that has -- we've had previous council direction, and so we want to talk a little bit about it tonight. In October, we received direction from council to do a transition plan. And so, tonight, we're going to present the transition plan along with some potential alternates or alternatives. But however, there's been also discussion about the senior program funding and how it evolved to where it is today. And so, what we're going to do is talk a little bit about that first, and then we're going to jump into getting council's input and direction on the CDBG Transition Plan. So, the senior center programming, one thing that I think is important to note is that it is a highly utilized core program for our department. It also is a very good program in the point that it leverages funds, available funds that we have. Prior to 2008, the program was funded out of general fund. And then, when we had the economic downturn, CDBG was identified as a potential source of funds for that program. So, right now, there's 4,800 seniors that participated last year in over 600 unique activities such as bongo, zumba dancing, all sorts of health and wellness activities for seniors. Our average age is between 75 and 84 years old. And also, 390 elderly disabled eat at the senior center every day. And a number of about 100 homebound seniors are fed in the program as well. Now, you can see by the chart that the town participates at a level of about 34 percent, which is $133,000. And the rest of the money is gained in different methods, as you can see on the slide. The idea is that we're going to bring it back to, as part of the regular budgetary process, and restore it to the general fund where it was pre-2008, and have it be part of the annual budget process. So, that's what we'll be intending to do as we move forward. Now, the CDBG Transition Plan and alternate.
Rod, could you go back one slide?
Yes, sir.
The $133,000 for the town, that was last year. Is that correct?
Yes.
And did that come out of general fund or out of CDBG?
Right now, today, it comes out of CDBG.
Okay.
So regardless of what direction we go, the town council goes in the future, we still would like to bring this back as a regular budgetary item, as part of the general fund, as a core service program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that one? Okay. All right. So, what you're about to see is an implementation transition plan for taking CDBG funds out of our budget. And also, I'm going to go over some other things that we discovered through our due diligence. And I'll explain that as I go. So if, when we transition from CDBG funding, the council vote would have to take place this month. And then, CDBG funds would cease July 1, 2014. At that time, or in the process concurrently, we would notify all the previously funded groups that are involved with the CDBG at this time. There's also a period of time where it would take for us to close out the projects that we currently have on the books. And then, we would also ask council to consider continuing the Gilbert Emergency and Minor Home Repair Program that's funded right now from CDBG at about $250,000 to $270,000. $288,000 is the anticipated amount for upcoming years. Now, through our due diligence and as part of the transition process, we also looked at what available projects are there for CDBG? And additional projects over and above what we've done in the past. And so, if, these are some ideas of some, a different way to look at CDBG funding for current needs in our community. And the CDBG administration would remain at $125,000. The emergency and minor home repair could remain at $250,000. And then, we would take the amount that we used for programming at the senior center, add it to the rest, and we'd come up with about $424,000 for some capital improvements. Now, the capital improvements that you see there, you haven't seen in the past because we've been focused on other things in our community. But these are also eligible projects that we believe would fall into the CDBG category and also be something that would be needed in our community. And I can go through these a little bit. I have some experts here in the audience that can also answer some questions. So the Heritage District, we believe that a water sewer assessment is necessary, and also a replacement of some infrastructure there. ADA compliance improvements that are identified in the transportation master plan, not all of them, but some of them would be eligible. There's two fire stations in town that would be eligible for fire equipment. And Page Park improvements, and then eligible area park improvements such as playgrounds in the eligible area, which you see on your map there in yellow. If we were to do this, we would have to take an aggressive approach and prepare a five-year consolidated plan within the next few months. And then, we'd have to bring it back to council in April, and then a five-year plan due to HUD in May. But then, I want to also make sure council is aware that it's a living document, so it's amendable as we progress if we identify other projects besides the ones that were listed as a community need. That concludes the brief overview of the options, I'm sorry, the alternative and the transition plan.
Questions, or I guess one, a couple of items Rod brought up. First, on the shift for general fund to take care of the senior center. What's the feelings about that? Vice Mayor Cooper.
I'm going to be judicious with my words today because of my throat. But I think that restoring the funding back to the way we've historically done it makes sense. Personally, I mean, I do think that it's one of those services that plays an important role in the lives of many residents. And we have the opportunity to leverage our funds with others, and I like that partnership and the ability to get more bang for our buck by working with others. So, I'd probably be supportive of learning more about that.
Thank you. Senator Ray? On that, I know we've got several things we can discuss, but on that topic, what are your feelings?
This is a question, I think, for Mayor Lewis and Councilmember Daniels. This used to be part of the general fund, the $133,000 more or less, and it was removed in '08, '09. Was that strictly a budget decision, or were there other reasons that went into the alternate funding source instead of general fund?
Please.
It was actually transitioned, I think, the year prior to us being on the council because if it was '08, '09, it would have to be before us. But we were looking at a lot of different ways to fund things at that time, and so I can only imagine that it was something that fit into the CDBG category, if you will. And it seemed like the most logical place to allow those services to continue. But on that note, Mayor, I like that we've referred to the senior center as one of our core services. I think that that's an important element. CDBG often feels like it's constantly on the hook, if you will. And so, to identify senior center funding as being part of our core services, such as we would with maintaining some of our parks or other community centers, that to me makes a lot of sense that we're referring to it in that way, and that we're looking at it just a little bit differently than we maybe we have in the past couple of years.
Thank you. Other comments? And Councilmember Cook, we realize you're on the phone, and jump in if you'd like. Councilmember Peterson?
Just a couple of questions real quick. In the alternative, in both scenarios, is the recommendation to have the senior center funded in the general fund? Because I didn't notice the senior center mentioned in the alternative.
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Peterson, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the other question I had was on the Meals on Wheels part of the senior center function that that fills. Do we have a sense of how much of the budget is used for that home-delivered meals program?
I don't have that information tonight. I can provide it to you at a later date.
Okay, something I was curious about, but.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, Councilmember Cook?
Having it in the general fund is preferred for me versus CDBG.
Okay. Councilmember Cook, any other comments?
No.
Thank you. I will, I mean, this is a discussion, no official motions, but I think the direction I'm hearing from council is that we would go that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
The other part, I know there will be some more questions and comments. We had received some feedback that we were struggling with finding projects to use CDBG funds, and it sounds like in part of that transition planning that some projects have been identified. And so, a five-year plan is proposed, which looks like about $800,000. Does that sound right?
Correct. The plans, the projects that are here will use up the available allocation over a five-year period.
Okay. So I think to the council, it is the question where we were struggling to come up with projects. Now we have projects. If we're okay with that, if we proceed, or if there are other feelings. Councilmember Peterson?
I had a few questions about the projects.
And maybe go backwards, Rod, so we can see the projects on the screen.
Sure.
I'm struggling to understand. I asked Donna Irvine and some other staff members. The CDBG can be used for certain projects, but not for the debt service for those projects. And I guess I'm trying to understand why that is, and I don't expect a clear answer tonight. But hopefully, if someone can send me the language that both shows that we can use it for the projects, but it excludes the debt service on the same kind of a project, that would be helpful for me. Still trying to understand that. The other question was, on the sewer replacement project, and I see a sewer assessment up there, that's interesting. So, I'm still trying to understand why that sewer replacement is required. I'm hearing that some growth in the downtown is pushing us that way. But I guess my specific question would be, at what point of growth were we pushed beyond the current capacity of the sewer? Which development caused that threshold to be crossed? Because typically, we, you know, if a development has to come in and the existing facilities are inadequate or just not there, they have to pay for their own, you know, need. Growth pays for growth. So, I'm trying to understand which development is causing us to get over that threshold because I would think that would make more sense for them to pay for that.
I'm going to let Edgar answer that.
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Peterson, you have two items on there for sewer improvements and water improvements projects, one being the assessment and then the actual infrastructure replacement. It's difficult to answer that question in terms of what is going to be the trigger for the capacity or the undercapacity of the existing systems. As you and I spoke over the phone, what prompted this project, just as a project, not necessarily as a CDBG project, is that when we started finalizing the plans for the Vaughn Avenue parking structure, we identified that as we started going downstream with the sewer, we identified that there is going to be a pinch point that crosses the railroad tracks that ultimately is going to impact the overall capacity of the system on the west side of Gilbert within the Heritage District. So that assessment is really the first phase to identify how we're going to address the future growth in that area, as well as which project or which developments will likely be the one that triggered that necessitates doing something with that sewer line.
I guess I was hoping for a little bit more specific answer because it seems we spend tens of thousands of dollars trying to assess the cost that growth puts on our infrastructure so that they can pay for the cost of their own growth. And I would think that we should follow that same model. It seems inappropriate to me to shift the cost of that growth onto taxpayers, which is what we would be doing to fund it this way, away from the developers. And it seems somewhat at odds with the idea that we had for the St. Xavier University Development Agreement, which was that they would pay the full cost of any impact that they had. Now, I'm not saying this upgrade is because of them, I don't know. I'm asking where, you know, what's, is there some data, some quantifiable tipping point? I mean, in plumbing and stuff, there are numbers, and you use plumbing fixture counts, and then you know what your tap size is, and you have a certain number of, you know, toilets drawn into the same line, and then you upgrade it to four. There's ways you calculate these things. I'm thinking there would be a way to figure this out. Can we seek that as an alternative funding rather than have the taxpayers pay for it, is my question?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, if I could help answer part of your question. In the Heritage District, or let me take a step back with projects like these, and when we did a full evaluation of all the available and eligible CDBG-type programs and what might be a good fit for our community. It's these types of projects, whether it's this project in the Heritage District or an other eligible part of our city. This one in the Heritage District is also an existing line with existing customers on it, and it's an aging line. So at some point, we'll need to replace it just because of its age. So while there probably will be additional growth within the district that will tap into that line, there's also existing customers that are on the line that would benefit from it. And again, whether it's this one, or we could easily identify other aging infrastructure within the eligible areas of our community to make these kind of expenditures on. And this project is just illustrative of the types of projects we would make a recommendation over the next five years to expend those dollars on.
And Councilmember Peterson, just because I ask a similar question, let me confirm with Rod and Edgar. A plan would go forward, and yet each of the projects, as there's more details provided, it still comes back to council for a vote. And so, this is just during a plan, going forward, we'd still have another step if something did not make sense to us where more details are provided. Is that correct?
Mayor Lewis, that is correct.
And something that Jessica brought up last time, some of the funds that we had applied for before, we did not use. So if we apply for $800,000, and we do not use the $800,000 by the end of the fifth year, we haven't approved certain projects. What happens at that point?
We need to, I'm sorry, Rod, if I could jump in real quick. We need to use the full allotment, Mayor. That's one of the stipulations of the program. You don't have the flexibility to accept a lesser amount, and that's why we think these type of infrastructure projects would be good expenditures for our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, you said something earlier in this meeting that I've been thinking about since you said it, and it was that we perhaps struggled to find projects that were CDBG-eligible. But I think what we're seeing here is an actual paradigm shift. We have previously used CDBG funds for programs and services that are basically an annual contract where we're providing a service to a person in need in our community. I think what we're seeing here is a shift in programs and services to infrastructure and capital investment in our community, which by its nature benefits the community as a whole. And so, we're shifting those dollars now from programs and services. So specifically, when we took, when staff has proposed now that we take senior center funding out of CDBG funds, at that point, that then frees up $250,000 that previously our thought was, we, perhaps we have projects that are, you know, extend beyond that dollar amount. Now we have capacity and a paradigm shift that's happening when it comes to CDBG funds. And I think this is a wise move for multiple reasons. One, without a needs assessment, it's very difficult for us to determine who specifically is in need of CDBG funds and who qualifies for those dollars based on the actual project. But secondly, CDBG funds invested in infrastructure does benefit the community as a whole. When I go to the Heritage District, or any member of the council, or any member of the community goes to the Heritage District, we can see the investment. And the sidewalk project that was done a few years ago is a specific example of that, that the comparison of that neighborhood prior to and after really was a night and day difference and has, I think, assisted in some of the desire to invest in our downtown Heritage District. So, again, a benefit to the community as a whole. So that's, the thing that you said, I thought, it's not that we couldn't ever find a project that would fit into this. I think it's really just a shift in thinking of how we use these dollars to the benefit of the community.
Thank you. That's very helpful, and I know in our last discussion, that was part of what we requested is that if we can't use it for this specific need that we're struggling for right now, as we age, we might need to in a year, and then reapply. But this is feedback that has come that has said that a shift can happen now. Okay? Councilmember Ray?
I have a few questions. Patrick, is there an answer to Mayor's question that if we don't use the money? Let's say we use 700 of the 800,000. Do we end up having to pay that 700,000 back? Do we just become ineligible for future projects? What happens if, for some reason, we can't spend it?
Yeah, I'll give you a high level, and then Rod, feel free to jump in. You know, we are expected to expand the entire allotment on an annual basis. If we don't, we need to provide them with, I'll call it a remedial plan of, okay, we missed the deadline, but here's the reason, and here's how we're going to expend it and by this date. And so, you know, they'll grant a formal extension to that. To get too many, you know, violations of that, they can formally kick you out of the program. But we are expended to, expected to expand the full allotment within the annual period for each of the five years.
And, if I may.
Please.
So if we're talking about 800,000, is this 800,000 per year for five years, or 800,000 over a five-year period?
$800,000 per year.
Okay.
And I was just wondering that too. So about $160,000 a year, although on the plan, you know, we may say we want to use 200,000 the first year, and the next year not as much, or something like that. So it's really by what we put in the plan?
It would have to be the full 800,000 every single year.
Oh, every year? Okay.
Every year.
So, last question, I think. When you have the numbers up there, Rod, of 125 and 250 and approximately 425,000, where does that 425,000 number come from? Is that assuming that, again, we're talking concepts only today, and you're going to come back theoretically with a five-year plan that explains in much more detail? I don't want to get in the weeds tonight. Is that 425 for those concept projects right there, or is that how much you would just have to anticipate spending every year to equal that 800,000?
That amount of money is the amount of money that would be available for capital projects each year over the five-year period. So it would be a couple million dollars.
So there's no real correlation between that 425,000 number and those six or seven red bullet points? Those are concepts, and that money would be used towards some of those?
Yes, that's correct. So it's just conceptual ideas at this point, you know, that we think that would be eligible. Any funds that are left over, depending on the amount, they can be rolled over to future years as well, under some cases, just so you know.
Vice Mayor Cooper?
There is some recent precedent for doing this because we're in the middle of a project right now in the Heritage District that is an infrastructure project that utilizes CDBG funds, and it went through the process of the Redevelopment Commission and ultimately came to the council. And so, that project is underway, and I think early next year, we'll start to see some of that infrastructure actually hit the ground. And so, it is a change, but it's not a, I mean, it's not an about face. We've already started doing some of these projects. And I think what I tried to communicate last time, this conversation came up in the same setting, was Gilbert is at a point in its development where, you know, a lot of us are still focused on new growth and all the exciting things that are going to still come, another 100,000 people and, you know, another two-thirds of commercial that hasn't built out yet. But we also need to recognize that part of the community has been here quite a while, and we need to be very proactive in our redevelopment efforts if we want to maintain the property values and maintain the attractiveness of the community as it relates to not only economic development, but all of the things that come with keeping a community up to date. And sometimes that is going to require investments on our side. Obviously, the business community and residents and HOAs and all of those folks need to do their part. But there are some projects. And I think back to, you know, the last Super Bowl time period when we had that water main break right at the railroad tracks in the Heritage District, and some of those pipes hadn't been touched since they were first installed many years ago. And that's just one case of infrastructure that may be impacted by growth or may just be old and will, you know, it'll be part of the long-range infrastructure plan. But this is certainly, I believe, an appropriate proactive way to address some of these redevelopment issues that are going to be coming our way, like it or not. And that's another reason why I kind of advocate for a redevelopment plan as well. But I think it all dovetails nicely together.
Councilmember Ray, any additional comments?
No other questions. I like the approach of supporting other projects that benefit the community as a whole. Some of these projects, I understand, are simply concepts and may have a more of a benefit on the Heritage District than they would in South Gilbert, but they're going to benefit the entire community. And so, I'm of the opinion that we move towards a five-year plan and see what it looks like. And it will come back, obviously, with lots of details. And at that point, if it seems like it doesn't make any sense, then people will vote accordingly. But I don't see any harm in moving towards a five-year plan to see what it looks like.
I'm hearing three in favor of moving forward. Other thoughts?
Mayor, thank you. Rod, how do we know these projects are eligible? Did someone call HUD and do a little pre-screening on them? Did someone call HUD and do a little pre-screening on them, or how do we know?
We surveyed other communities. We talked to HUD. We also researched the HUD laws, the requirements, more efficiently to see if there is different projects than what we've been used to funding in the past.
Mayor, the reason I ask is, you know, on the HUD website here, understanding what's the intent of this, and it's really housing, there's some auxiliary purposes here, there's some jobs, you know, to be created and some others. To me, certainly the second bullet seems to be in the, you know, the purpose of why Congress is appropriating this. I mean, I've expressed my views and opinions on the federal spending here and my version of that, and that persists, but, you know, the second bullet seems to be the one that actually is for this particular thing. The others seem to be, I guess if we kind of indirectly back into it, we could kind of figure it out type of thing. I don't, it feels like we're kind of reaching, and one of the reasons I was comfortable with, you know, letting, you know, not jumping into another five-year, and correct me if I misunderstood, but it sounds like if there was some legitimate reason that was in the wheelhouse of HUD, we could apply under the state for something like that until we do have an organized plan, you know, that we can put something out. So, you know, clearly, I'm still against a lot of the federal spending, but if the council is going this way, I guess, which just suggests considering that we don't have to do it right away, because we can wait and see what the true need is, and so the five-year plan is more robust and it's more specific for the intent of the appropriation instead of just trying to cobble things together, because that's, seems to be what it feels like to me at this point.
Councilmember Peterson?
No, I agree with what's been said, that this is an improvement. Conceptually, I think this is an improvement in the approach. I also agree with Councilmember Taylor and his comment that it does feel kind of like a stretch beyond sort of the intent of CDBG on a lot of this. And even the one that he gave is a good example of probably fits in line with it. I would just say that I'm not sure we're really gaining anything if we shift the cost of growth onto taxpayers. I don't think that that's a move in the right direction, and, you know, there's a lot of examples where growth will end up replacing a line that other people benefit from that replacement. It happens all the time, but they still need the larger line because they still need it, and so it is what it is. And so they still pay that cost. I think, for me, you know, this, my concerns about this go back to the original problems I've had for a long time. With grants in general, frankly, and this one in particular, we have to spend all of it, and I can guarantee you, you know, a use-it-or-lose-it design is guaranteed to produce quite a bit of waste. I mean, I think back to my friend's story from the Marines where they knew it was use it or lose it for their budget, and so they would literally burn fuel as fast as they could at the end of the budget year, and in fact, got to the point of dumping fuel out of, over the ocean. And I don't want to be in a position we've committed to spending money when we don't even really know for sure where we would spend it. I am convinced that we will have quite a bit of waste with that design, and I think that's a bad idea. Now, I have thought about this in compromise, in a thought of compromise, I certainly have a problem with spending money we don't have, which is what I see us as doing when we spend federal dollars. But I also have problems with property taxes and the way they work. If I could be guaranteed that there would be an equal reduction in property taxes that would be offset by receiving these funds, I think I would, in a spirit of compromise, go forward with that. Problem is, if you can't use it to pay for existing debt service, I'm sort of sometimes wondering, did we just create the project so we could spend that extra little bit that we needed to spend in order to meet the requirement? So I don't know that I could support this unless we can, you know, see something like that. But anyway, I did want to, I'm sorry, one last thought. I remember a few years ago, we were having a pretty major state budget crisis, and actually, it was one of the first political meetings I had attended. I kind of like woke up one day and wondered what was going on in my country, but I went to this meeting, and they presented this survey that they took of the citizens at large and said, hey, should we either cut the budget or should we raise taxes to fix the budget crisis? Cut spending or raise taxes? Well, by and large, everyone said, cut taxes. But then they said, okay, what areas should we cut in? And, you know, on an individual level, there were certainly one or two areas each person would probably say cut in this area, but as an average, there wasn't a single area of the state budget that the majority thought we should cut. The point is, we all think we should cut spending, except for when it comes to us and what we care about and what we think is important. If it doesn't start with us, who? And if not now, when? And so we're participating in this deficit spending, and I think there's other ways to fund these things through growth paying for itself in large degree, you know? If years in the future, we have problems with aging infrastructure, we can certainly reapply, but I don't want to waste a whole lot of money in between because we're just determined to bring this funding in, so it's my concern.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook, any comments?
Well, one comment I do want to say publicly is that I know personally, each of us on the council is very dedicated into supporting nonprofits, you know, personally. I know each of us have given our time and our finances to help, you know, those that are less fortunate in our community and outside regionally. So I just want to just let the public know that, you know, this is a very important issue for us to discuss, but I know that it's one that we do have some very strong opinions on, and I'm grateful for the opportunity for the discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
I'm looking at the CDBG Program Guide, and it says that to be CDBG eligible, because I wanted to know, are these programs really a stretch? Are these, this list a stretch? There's three qualifications. One, benefiting low and moderate income persons. Two, preventing or eliminating blight. Or three, meeting other community development needs having a particular urgency. And so I think those three things, I mean, if you look at these on the list, I don't know that these are a stretch based on those three criteria.
I'll make a couple of comments, and I think the feedback has come on the statement about the property. These type of projects are designed to enhance property values, and so I think that does help all the taxpayers. And I appreciate, and I've continued to appreciate, Councilmember Peterson's comment of, we all need to do our part, and so part of putting our trust in staff, which I do have, is that if we don't have projects, and we'll still, each project will come to the council for discussion, and we'll be able to look at the details and talk about it, but if we don't have projects, we will put in our statement that we couldn't use the funds and explain that. It looks like there will still be needs, and that may not be an issue, but we'll look to our team members that have great integrity. It's one of our core values to make sure that we're using the funds wisely, and I have full confidence in that, and so I have no doubt with that. I know that it needs to start with all of us, and maybe that's the statement I was just making, and we still do that. CDBG funds, I continue to, as I've said in the past, state that these are our tax dollars, and if there are needs on a case-by-case basis that make sense, then I think we're using our tax dollars because we are providing more of our tax dollars to spread around the country than we're using here, and so I have no problem, if it makes sense, for Gilbert. And I also have no problem, as we've said, we've elected for our district Congressman Sam, and he does a great job in representing our area, and if at the federal level, feedback came and votes came to say, we're not going to use these funds anymore, I'm in full support of that. But while these funds are being made available, it's also, I feel very strongly for a council to do our part to make sure that our funds provided for our use too and use it wisely. And anytime that we're not using funds wisely, if a project comes and doesn't make sense for that project to take place, then we'll vote not to proceed with it. But I think in hearing the council that, at this point, the direction would be to instruct our town staff to proceed, to go forward with, during the five-year plan, and then as projects come, we'll have a chance to talk about them on the individual project basis. Councilmember Peterson?
I just want, two last short, very brief comments. The homework I've done on the donor state issue has revealed to me, at least I know for sure, the Congressional Budget Office did a study recently, that in Arizona, and actually, the situation's completely changed, in Arizona, we get more funding than we send in. I know that's true in transportation. I don't have as good a data on some of the other issues, but the data that I have found seems to indicate we actually receive more money than we send in in the other categories as well. So as far as I'm concerned, we aren't a donor state. I think that's an outdated notion, and so it's really not our money coming back. And furthermore, it really can't be anyway, because most of what we get is borrowed anyway. So it's not our money, and...
Let me just ask a question. As I've looked at comparisons of what Gilbert has for CDBG funds, we are on the low scale compared to other communities. Is that correct?
It's based on population, Mayor.
Okay. So that it would be equal, is that? All right. Second point?
And the last one was just in response to Councilmember Daniels' comment about the three general points. If it's really that general, then we should be able to use it to pay for debt, because if it's really urgent, we had to fund it with debt before we had enough money saved to pay for it. And I'm just saying that I'm hearing from them that we can't. So it's not as easy and simple as just those three. I know there's a lot more specific requirements, and when we get into those specific requirements, we're pushed into places where we're looking to spend money that we may not really need to, but unless we want to lose all of it, there may be a good 30% of it we really value, but we're going to have to spend that other 70% just to keep that 30. And so I'm just saying that by design, it's, I think it's a bad plan.
Thank you. So to town leadership, direction has been given? Any questions? Okay?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, and Don will have you come forward and put this summary on the overhead. The question came about budget planning for nonprofits, and we have had a plan, and in talking with Don, we did summarize the items that are put on the screen, and this was not available to the public, and so I'll try and verbally summarize it, and maybe are you able to make that a little larger in font? Zoom out. The background is that we had been using general funds in the neighborhood of about 330,000 for nonprofits, and the most recent year for that would have been the 2012, 13 year. As a council, we did discuss taking a five-year time period and taking the 330,000 down to zero. Part of discussions we had as a council also were to have funds replenished through other sources, and that, we had some ideas for that, and some of that has happened. It has been a challenge, I think, from a council perspective with many different things going on, to find time to do that. And so the reason why a question has come is also there's a needs assessment, and with the needs assessment, that question has continued to be from the council, well, what 330,000 or 297,000 or whatever the figure may be? We've struggled to know what is appropriate, and what is appropriate now in future years may be a different number, and obviously, it would be as our community ages, as we add more population, and, but we struggled with that. Part of this handout, and Don needs assessment, just to summary to the council and to the public, is we did approve for that to go forward. That will take place from January to June of next year. Continue to move it up a little bit. We do have the plan that currently shows the five-year reduction, and then along with that, we have had some funds outside of general fund that have come through other sources, neighbor to neighbor, and the Share My Stamp. And so as we take that, and I, I'll make one more comment, and then we'll look at the three options. Some discussion has happened with neighbor to neighbor, and go ahead and move to the second page, and this is just an example. Neighbor to neighbor may not be the only option, and there are others that we have discussed, but neighbor to neighbor is one that when we have talked to citizens and they have heard about the opportunity, that typically, it's about 20 nonprofits in Gilbert to support, that many have been favorable. Some have expressed concern that it's hard to figure out how to do it on our website. Some have said that they would like more information, and so part of a discussion today could be, as we look at the options A, B, and C, that we could request the town staff would spend some more time in looking at how to make it easier, some more marketing that could take place, and those are just some scenarios, and how likely they are would probably depend on how much time we would want to spend, and it's also, as we understand, if we did do some more marketing, we were asking town staff to spend some time on that, and therefore, that may not be a dollar figure, but it is time, and therefore, that is use of a resource that taxpayers are counting on to be used in the most efficient way. So that's part of a discussion on that. But those are just some scenarios that would show, out of our 85,000 customers, if a certain number chose to contribute, that that is one funding mechanism that might be a possibility. Don, the bottom part, three options, and there may be more, but three options that could be part of a discussion tonight, would be to keep our current plan, and the reduction would be for next year's funds, 247,500. And I'll insert another question that came up, is town staff is assuming that we would do the same thing as last year, that we would go through the same process, and so if we have different thoughts, they would be looking for that direction. The B part of those funding options would be that while a needs assessment is going forward, that we would go ahead and stick with what had been allocated in the prior year, and that would be the 297,000. The C option is also one that we did, in a sense, as a council, give support to, and that is, any of the funds that we did have through neighbor to neighbor or Share My Stamp could also be used, and that could be added to the 247,500. So to the question of budget planning for nonprofits for fiscal year 14 and 15, comments and thoughts and suggestions? Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, thank you for that summary. I, in short, I would support options A or C. I mean, A was what we already decided. C is something we made account for, that obviously, we didn't want to reduce total funding that was donated or, you know, acquired by non-tax sources. So C allows for that, and I think that's totally appropriate, something we also allowed for in our previous decisions. But I do want to comment about the funding issue, as far as the total funding that the town is sending to the nonprofits. I don't think we're ever going to be able to measure it dollar for dollar. I'll give you one example of, I don't know how to measure it, but the House of Refuge right now has just had the, you know, one of the churches in our community just wrapped their arms around it. And, you know, it started with a, you know, one of the, a service day project, but we were hearing that between projects, they were continuing to donate and give and just follow up and make sure they had what they need. At one point, House of Refuge was saying, look, as far as material donations, we don't need anymore. We got to find someone else to give all these donations to, because we just don't have room for it. And from what I've heard, that partnership has continued, and so that's just the one case I know of. I can't give you an exact dollar amount there, but there's some major contributions going on that happen outside of us, but can also be a result of some of our efforts in, you know, encouraging people to support our nonprofits. So, you know, I never planned on being able to measure it dollar for dollar. I do plan on continuing to try and increase that voluntary giving, and I think that the community will continue to step up and, you know, take care of those needs as they arise.
Part of, and you've done, you've been a great leader with that volunteerism, and thank you for that. I think it will be a day that we look forward to when Jessica and team are accepting applications for funding, and our nonprofits say our needs are met. That's a day we're looking forward to. So we'll continue to encourage volunteerism, and for that church and others that are being so helpful... so helpful, we thank them for that. Other questions or comments? Vice Mayor Cooper?
Don, can you just remind me what the neighbor-to-neighbor and Share My Stamp funds, the $35,000 this year, what, how did we allocate that for this year? Just in general, are they going to nonprofit support?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cooper, those are going towards, towards community-related benefits. And I believe, actually, Councilmember Daniels had a hand in determining some of those specifics as well, but that, those are funding that we were able to contribute towards those areas.
So is option C, is option, if we really were to maintain current funds under option B, is it not $297 plus, neighbor-to-neighbor and Share My Stamp?
Under option B, yes, that would certainly be a possibility.
But, I mean, if that is what maintaining is, is the, it would be the $297 plus the 35 allocated?
Correct. We could budget that, we could budget a such next year.
Yeah. You know, I've kind of stated my opinion on this many times, and in fact, when I, when this first came to us, and not first, but after many, many times of it coming to us, and we came up with the compromise plan, which is the one I offered, is like, okay, let's give this a shot. We'll use a drawdown approach to give the community partners an opportunity to supplement their funding and that kind of thing. I did it really with a contingency in my mind, that we would find replacement funds, whether, and I wasn't putting the onus all on the council to go out and raise those kind of funds. I didn't expect that would happen, but I thought we would do our, make our best efforts as a community, once the need was known. And I think the community has done some amazing things. I'm very impressed with the volunteerism that's going on out there, and I commend everyone who's been involved in that. I think it's really cool. But as I also consider the, you know, some, you know, organizations do need funding to do their job, and volunteerism won't always take every need away. I consider the town of Gilbert in its development stage right now, and as I compare it with other communities that might be a little more mature or more established, I can kind of see why, in this community, we haven't had the outpouring of funds to replace the funds that we have reduced. And these are just guesses or estimates, but we have a young community with a lot of transplants that are getting settled, trying to figure their life out, and may not know exactly how and where to plug in, and while the volunteerism efforts helps there, they may not know how to plug in financially. We have, but probably, probably a bigger point would be just where our business community's at. They do tremendous work, and I'm not belittling all that they do by any means, but if you look at communities that have a little bit more business base, and that's where we're striving for, a lot of those businesses are able to take up the slack that we're talking about here. And we're, that's part of our goal here with economic development, is to bring these big businesses in, these high-wage jobs, and also help the small businesses. Everybody contribute a little bit more. And we're probably at that stage. I think this concept of getting down to zero is a good concept, but I think it's before its time in some ways, in that we don't have, I'm just not sure we have the ability yet in our community to have everyone step in and replace these funds. And so when I kind of proposed that drawdown, that different drawdown approach over an extended period of time, it was with the thought that other funds would come in. And so since they haven't necessarily totally come in the way that we had hoped, I'm really more on that option B side myself. I think we've, we need to, we need to continue efforts to replace those funds, but, you know, drawing down, okay, so let's draw down one more year, and let's see what happens under option C. I might could get there, but I'm getting concerned.
Councilmember Peterson and Vice Mayor Cooper, and then I'll have others continue to comment. How do the two of you feel about having resources, town resources, used to do some marketing and help with neighbor-to-neighbor? And I, part of today's direction is if the council felt good about that. It's not to do anything more than have them think about it and give us some feedback on what that could mean. So it's not to say start, because I think in fairness to all of us, we'd still want to know what that proposal would be without saying go. So how do the two of you feel about having town staff look at options and come back and share them with us?
Mayor, I'll tell you, the one thing that I was hoping we'd do a long time ago, when we first started this Share My Stamp thing, I was hoping that we could reserve a part of those advertisements for promoting neighbor-to-neighbor, and maybe even certain nonprofits, whatever, but, and that way, it's not even any tax resources that are going to that. But I mean, if you believe in advertising, you're going to get back more than you spend if you do it right. And so it seems like we might see a little bit of a reduction in the Share My Stamp, because we're going to have to take a little bit of that advertising space away. But I think we'd see more than what we lost in returns to neighbor-to-neighbor, if that's what we're promoting with that space. So that's, that's an angle I would love to explore.
Thank you. And I'll insert one comment I made that I would want town staff to look at, because it may be very simple, or it could be complex, of how to make it easier, if you chose to sign up for neighbor-to-neighbor, to do it. Right now, it's, to most people that I talked, it's very complicated, it's hard to find, and so that could be possibly just a quick fix, putting it on the webpage. It's easier to click and find, but thank you. That's a, that's a good point, and another thing that could happen as far as an insert to the Share My Stamp. Vice Mayor Cooper?
I agree, and I think that's a good comment, but I also am willing to go that extra step of encouraging, finding ways to encourage and inform of the opportunities that some may not be aware of.
Thank you. Other councilmembers?
Certainly, information about what it would cost to maybe upgrade the way that they can sign up. I mean, it's good information. I think that'd be helpful to know.
Councilmember Ray?
So to answer your first question about the budget funding options, I'm in favor of A or C. A couple of comments about that is, number one, I'm not, I don't understand what's taking so long with this needs assessment. This was approved months and months ago, and then two months ago, I believe, it was re-approved again. And so I don't understand what's taking so long with that. I would prefer some urgency behind that, and perhaps it is at the most urgent pace possible right now, and I don't see everything day-to-day. And so that, I may be out of line in saying that, but I would prefer some more urgency behind that, so we actually know what the needs are. The other thing that would be interesting to me, and this may not be possible to achieve, but I would be interested in some of these nonprofits who have received funding from the town, and there's a few other nonprofits that receive the vast majority of the funding. And obviously, each of these years through the reduction plan thus far, they have taken a reduction. I would be interested in hearing back from them as to what the impact of that reduction has been. Because we can sit up here and talk about numbers and things, but it would be helpful to understand exactly what $10,000 less per year, $50,000 less per year, what the impact is on them, and whether that means that our residents are going to neighboring communities to find the same support. I don't know what the answer is. And so that would be helpful for me, as we continue the drawdown, to just see exactly what the day-to-day impacts are because of that.
Thank you.
And then as far as your last question about town staff, I would love to hear back from Patrick or Mark or whoever. At some point, did you decide what kind of plan they would want to move forward with, and what the cost would be, and then it can be determined if it's a worthwhile option at that point.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me throw out a couple of points. Maybe just start with the question that you asked, Councilmember Cooper and Peterson. Similar thoughts, you know, okay with that. I think it's appropriate as part of a transition plan for them to help with the transition. So certainly support that, and, you know, appreciate the idea on that, how to use, how to fund some of that. So I wasn't on the council when the commitment for the needs assessment was made, so I don't feel totally bound to that, would support it, but to me, I think part of the direction is a little off, in that if we're talking about a transition plan, then we need to help the nonprofits build the capacity to, you know, build the funding. You know, there's two types of nonprofits in Gilbert today. There's lots that are thriving that don't, you know, receive town money. So what are they doing? Why are they thriving? Why are they doing so well? You know, I drove down the road the other day, and there was pink everywhere, pink motorcycles and pink everything. And that's an example. Obviously, that's a nationwide, but they have lots of, lots of tools. There's local ones that are similar. So the question that I keep wondering is, why do some still need this and others don't? And how can we, as town, help those that still need this in this transition window for the money that we're allocating, use to help them build that capacity so that they are up on their feet? My long-term vision of this is that we have a real clear vision of what the community is actually supporting. I mean, there may be some nonprofits that the community doesn't support. They may have in the times past, but they may have, I mean, times change. So if it's, if it's truly rooted in the community and what it's supporting in our culture and traditions, then it'll move with the times, and it'll be funded appropriately. So to me, that's what the effort should go to. Just a couple of data elements. Talked to a leader with the Small Business Alliance today, and I asked her, I said, how's the cause marketing programs working? You know, because they've done a pretty good job with that.
And explain what that is for the public.
Okay, cause marketing is a partnership between a nonprofit and a business, large or small, to help raise money for both. And they're very profitable if you can do this. You know, for example, a Roundup at the Teal program is an example of cause marketing. And there's empirical solid data that shows that people will drive an extra two miles or an extra 10 minutes to go to a business that has a dedicated, you know, nonprofit that they give with to fund and help and support. And so I said, how's that going? And what are we learning? And, you know, why is this disconnect between there's some that still need money and what we're hearing? A couple of things. One is, one learning was, is there's still a lot of people that just don't know about it, so there's a lack of education on it. There's some, there's some small businesses, I got one example of, they did a very informal, loose, kind of crowdsourcing type of total online, Facebook-oriented fundraising for a specific nonprofit, and they raised about $10,000. So that's an example of one that's really not even coordinated, and, you know, year over year, a systematic process and things like that. That, I think, that's a, that's a pretty effective fundraising for that type of effort. There's, I'm not sure how accurate this number is, you can correct me, but we have about 5,000 small businesses in, in the town of Gilbert, and hopefully, that number continues to swell and grow, because small businesses become big businesses. But it would take, so how much would it take of those businesses doing these ad hoc things to get the $330,000? It would take less than, it would take just over, less than, it would take .0066 of our small businesses, so less than 1% of our small business to do just something, you know, just an ad hoc. And just think what it would happen if they did more. So I guess that's, that's where my head's at on this, is that that's why A and C are a little bit more appealing to me, because it continues to focus the decision, but there's still, to me, out there, huge opportunities. You know, we have Joe Guzek here at a lot of our meetings. He's looked at this from the school standpoint, as we know, and this is tax credit month, so everybody's encouraged to give their tax credit to a great school. He estimates that there's about $24 million in ungiven tax credits just within the town. That's a pretty big number. So I know that's not the complete picture, but those are just a couple of data elements that there's a lot of money out there. And so this $330,000 discussion, it's, to me, we're kind of having the wrong discussion on that, and it's just focusing on this dollar amount, and the needs assessment is all about that. And to me, it's about the bigger picture of how to get more community funding, because I think if we have a good focused process on that, and reallocate some of these dollars that we have now into that, not only are we going to hit the $330,000, but it's going to go up incrementally, plus it has a little more sustainability on it. It's a couple of thoughts.
Councilmember Daniels?
I'm in favor of C, Mayor. I think it falls with the intent of the decision that we made as a council a year, two years ago, and I also believe that it does what we want when it comes to neighbor-to-neighbor and Share My Stamp. I agree that we need to do more marketing. You and I have walked down that road a couple of times already. I, I won't dictate to staff how to do that, but I, my preference is that it does go through a professional marketing organization. I feel like our staff is stretched enough at this point. I feel like there probably are funds within those neighbor-to-neighbor dollars or the Share My Stamp funds to provide for that. I think it would have to be on a test basis. Jared's brought up some great ideas, but we can't solve those types of problems through this decision. We need to make this decision, and by all means, work towards, you know, big ideas, but not, that's not what we can solve today, specifically in this type of decision. So that's my preference, Mayor, and I would like to see us market more.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
Well, I would just ask staff if they would aggressively, you know, get the needs assessment done sooner than later. And that would be something that I would strongly recommend.
And I don't know if you received a copy of what we've been looking at, and so when we're saying options A, B, and C, that may not be meaningful to you. Do you have any comments on A, B, and C, if it has made sense to you?
Without seeing it, Mayor, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. I would summarize, best I could, that we would direct town staff to proceed with option C. And as far as resources, a suggestion of professional assistance, and I like this comment from Councilmember Taylor, that it may still be that we could facilitate something. Maybe it's just a discussion with the business leaders to see if they could pick it up and help drive that, and then there may be some other ideas. So it would be the option C, and then it would be to direct staff to do some more brainstorming and propose to council what that might mean to try and increase some additional funding with some emphasis on neighbor-to-neighbor. And also, I like that thought of the Share My Stamp, that that could include some marketing. And of course, as you heard me say already, that a technology piece to this that would make it easier for those that want to sign up for it. Let's move to agenda item number four. This is very general, and will be fairly quick, but I see that I've got about six items. The first is to hand out, and this is for future, but also to refer back to past, and Councilmember Daniels, you can put this on, Councilmember Cook's stat. In attending a recent League of Cities Executive Meeting, I received the municipal policy statement for 2014 from the League. I wanted you to have this because this is what we discussed in August, and this is what is now the League's summarized items that they'll be working on in the upcoming legislative session. The second thing that I wanted to mention is that on an occasional basis, and I'll probably put it in a time period about every two years, GPEC was here yesterday, and so the GPEC leadership was here to talk to us about our future partnership, what was working, receiving feedback. And I thought as a council, you would be very interested in a question that was asked, because GPEC, our Greater Phoenix Economic Council, which is an extension of our local team, and primarily, they hope, they help open doors to Arizona and to the Greater Phoenix area for businesses to consider coming here, and to help us retain our current businesses. We asked the opening question, they're serving 23 other municipalities, and when they think of Gilbert, what do they think of from a business perspective? They said first, that Gilbert is known in our Greater Phoenix area for great schools. They said second, that Gilbert has tremendous infrastructures and amenities that many other communities do not have. Third, they said, we have a very strong workforce. And I think that are three comments that let us know that when they're marketing the various aspects of the Greater Phoenix area, that Gilbert is thought of very highly. The fourth thing they said, I think you would also be interested in, that in past years, they've said often, when a business opportunity has come, that Gilbert has not been on the list. And And part of that is with our recession, that many of the businesses were looking for existing buildings, and we did not have buildings that were built, the facilities. And so the statement they made is that Gilbert, with the Rivellon project, with the Nationwide Realty Group, that that has completely changed their ability to market Gilbert. And so on a positive note, they see that that spec building coming out, they see the plan for Rivellon with a 3.1 million square feet of office space being something that they're now able to tell businesses about. And so I wanted to share that feedback with you. The next item is a question. It's an email that will come, and I'll just do a verbal update if you've got feedback on your calendar. MD Anderson, Phase Two is nearing construction completion. There is a chance for some of us to take a tour a week from Thursday from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. Do any of you know if that would work? And if not, if you don't know, that's fine, you can give Vicky that feedback later, but that was a question that came right before we met, and so if any of you know now, we'll take thumbs up, otherwise you can let Vicky know.
It's the 12th?
Yes, it'll be the 12th. The last three items are very quick, they are calendar items. The parade Saturday begins at 9:00. And for the community who are hearing this, we're excited for Gilbert Day's parade to proceed. It's part of our heritage, and we do have great things that will occur, including some bands, so we'll be there. Same plan that was proposed before, same time period, and we'll see you there Saturday at whatever time we're supposed to be there, although I probably won't be there as early as they said. Because of another commitment that is on the schedule to attend and help with that, and then get there, but I'll see you there. Any questions about the parade? Looking forward to it. The other question that came, a reminder, and to our town clerk, Kathy Templeton, next Monday at 5:00 PM, we are to be here for pitchers. Is that correct? That's our group pitcher as a council. And then, any update on the, a week, well, it's proposed, it's a tentative to have a study session next Tuesday, talking to a couple of councilmembers already. The only agenda item was the 12th Town Council gen, and the feedback I've received so far is that we probably do not need a study session on the 10th. Any other comments to confirm that? Confirmed, all right. To our town clerk, we will cancel the study session on the 10th. There is proposed an executive session at 5:00 PM on the 12th, preceding Operation Welcome Home, which is at 6:00 o'clock, and then town council meeting. So canceled. On the 10th, study session done.
Executive session, Mayor. We have canceled that one on the 12th.
Oh, thank you. That's team effort. So we have Operation Welcome Home at 6:00 o'clock, and town council meeting at 7:00 o'clock on the 12th. That's the calendar. Oh, one more, Councilmember Daniels?
I'm sure it was on your list. Nights of Lights this Friday night here at Town Hall.
Yes, it was on my list. Thank you. Keep telling us more.
No, I think that's probably all. I have 5:00 it starts, and we, of course, invite the community out for that. 5:30, sorry.
5:30. For the council, there's a certain time we go on stage, which is a key time for all of us to hear. Do you know what time that is? May I think that I say, here, 6:30? Okay. And we'll look for an email to confirm that, but tentatively, 6:30.
It's 6:00. Tell us to be there.
Tell you 6:30, tell me 6:00. How's that?
No, us.
Us, 6:00, okay, thank you. To our town attorney, just to confirm, at this point, do I need to adjourn the study session and call to order the special meeting? And is there a motion to recess the special meeting and reconvene an executive session?
Sound mode.
A second?
Second.
Thank you.